Dr. Rice. Sorry about that, just testing the microphone.
Mr. Johnson, I see you're here. Looks like your phone is muted.
Hello?
Hey Fred, I see you in the meeting.
Yes.
Ms. Knight, does I see you at oh nine? Ms. Knight, if you're on the call, your phone is muted.
Okay, now better?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Rogers, I see you joined the call, is that correct?
Finally, we gotta find a better way to do this, because I had to scratch back through three emails trying to figure out, okay, we got closed open, so hopefully COVID will end and we can get back to normal, because this is just crazy. Okay, before we call this open session in session, those that want to join me, Ms. Tetter, would you lead us in prayer?
Mr. Rogers, I don't believe Ms. Tetter or Ms. Messick have made the meeting yet. Ms. Knight is here and Mr. Johnson and you are here, I still think we're waiting on the other two.
Okay, then we'll wait. I think the problem is, we're getting multiple invites to each one, but nobody knows which one to hit. Do we have anybody other than the three you've mentioned in the meeting room yet?
Uh, yes sir, all the directors appear to be here, Dr. Taylor, Neil Caldwell from the paper.
Okay.
Ms. Tetter appears to have joined now, and just waiting on Ms. Messick.
Okay. No Ms. Messick yet?
I don't see her.
I'll tell you what, while we're waiting on Ms. Messick, Ms. Tetter, would you lead us? Ms. Tetter, are you muted?
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, sorry about that, technical difficulty with this time around, okay. Um, I'll now lead the prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, now more than ever, our students need our support and leadership. Please guide us in the right direction to do what is right by them. We pray for them, the children, their parents, teachers, and our staff. Please keep them safe and healthy during this most difficult and trying of times. In addition, I know of at least two of our own that need your healing hand laid upon them. Please be with them and their families and their doctors, help them to heal and recover, so they may continue to serve you. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Tetter. Okay, officially call this meeting to order at this point, well, I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, undivided, indivisible, undivided in liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are now officially in order. Welcome, Mr. Caldwell, I think you may be the only visitor, is he not, Mr. Dr. Rice?
That is correct.
Okay, alright, and then with that, we'll lead us into the first part of open session. Let's put it back in the book, because we're all over the place. Uh, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any questions about the agenda? And has Ms. Messick been able to join us?
I do not see her on the call yet.
Could we have Ms. Barker assist her?
Ms. Barker, would you be able to reach out to Ms. Messick?
Yes, um, I do not have her number.
I'll send it to you in just shortly.
Perfect.
Dr. Rice, Dr. Rice, I just called Pat, she's having trouble getting on, but she's gonna try to call in.
Okay.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes ma'am, Ms. Tetter.
Um, I just wanted to know if we could get, uh, add to the discussion any latest COVID-19 related updates that we may not be aware of.
Okay. Alright, so we'll make that discussion F.
Thank you.
COVID-19. Okay. Alright, so pending no other modifications, Ms. Knight, uh, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as modified there with discussion item F.
Thank you, Ms. Tetter, uh.
I'll second that, Mr. Rogers.
Okay, I can recognize voices, but to be state compliant, Ms. Tetter made the motion, Ms. Knight seconded the motion, just as you say, I'll second it, just say your name. Uh, so I have a motion, I have a second. Ms. Knight, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Messick still on also, Ms. Tetter, how do you vote?
Mine.
I'll vote also, so those present at the time are unanimous, agenda is approved, good news.
And, Mr. Rogers, Ms. Messick has joined now.
Hello, Pat, welcome back. Uh, good news.
Uh, Mr. Rogers, as you see in your, your book, we had planned to announce that the Carolina Panthers planned to honor the graduating class of 2020, and they had reached out to school districts across the state and told us that, and that was our, uh, plan was to announce that this evening, but late last week, maybe Friday or so, they, they sent us messages that they were gonna have to hold off on those plans, uh, due to some privacy concerns that people had raised, but they were, are still want to do something, but their plans that they had planned at that time, uh, they needed to, I'll use a football term, they needed to drop back in punt, so, uh, we're unable to share the good news that we thought we were gonna share tonight.
Okay. Alright, pending no more good news. Mr. Johnson, do we have anybody sign up for public comments?
Not that I'm aware of, I will defer to Mrs. Bojack to see if she has received any.
No, I have not received any public comments.
To keep us legal, do we still need to read it, Fred?
No, not if we have, unless there's anyone on the line who wishes to address the board.
Okay, does anybody so wish to do so? Pending none, we'll move on to the consent, consent agenda. Does everybody have time to review it? Then at that time, the board will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as from, as presented. Do I have such a motion signified by saying your name, and aye?
Cheryl Knight, uh.
Okay, I'm assuming that is the, the motion has been made? Do I have a second? Okay. Do I have a second?
Katie Tetter, I will.
Yeah.
Tetter, I will second that, aye.
Alright, all those, well, oh, Ms. Knight, how do, how so do you vote?
How about, uh, Cheryl Knight?
Ms. Messick, I mean, yeah, Ms. Messick. How do you vote?
Ms. Messick, if you can hear me, your phone is muted.
Pat, you might have to push star six, star six to unmute.
Ms. Tetter, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I do also. The consent agenda has been approved. Discussion of E-rate category two.
Um, this is where I would like for you guys to, uh, I have applied for around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, we get an eighty percent discount, so we are responsible for the twenty percent, but then the state reimburses us that back to us, so we have no, um, it will be no cost to Stokes County schools. Um, MCNC came and did an assessment and prioritized our needs, um, based on their assessment, so that's how we determined, um, we were buying, um, switches and cabling, and, um, new access points and subscriptions to update some of our schools, um, to get us more up to date.
Okay. When is this due by?
Well, I have applied, um, the deadline originally was March twenty-fifth, um, MCNC got the assessment in March thirteenth, and then had a follow-up on the nineteenth, and then the COVID-19 came about, so, um, trying to reach the deadline of March twenty-fifth through all that, they extended the deadline to April twenty-ninth, so we were able to meet that, but I didn't get the last bid from the companies till April twenty-third, so after that, then I was, um, able to go ahead and proceed with the application process, that's why I was unable to have it for the last board meetings. Um, so I'm just waiting to hear if it's approved, um, so we can go forward with that, if, uh, approved by you all.
Okay, Ms. Knight, do you have any questions?
Um, what Karen, what will it mainly update, you mentioned switches?
Um, it will update the Aruba switches, or actually change some of the older switches, we still have some netgear switches in our schools that are predated and are not serving our needs, so it will update those to the Aruba, which is more current to what our newer ones are, so we can become more consistent. We were also, this year, they, they were, um, they added that we could buy UPSs, um, the big power protectors, like surge protectors that are battery packed, so we were able to add those here as well, and, um, like I said, the switching and cabling, and then the subscription that goes with the access points through the air hives.
And with those wireless access points, um, will they just allow more, um, access for more people to access them in the school?
Um, improving the connections and, um, adding access, honestly, I'm not sure exactly if it's adding access, but it's improving the dated ones, so that we can go to more cloud-based and go, go more current, become more current.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Messick, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I got you fine, Pat, do you have any questions?
I did have one, uh, approximately, how many schools do you think can be updated, because you just said some of our schools?
Um, currently, um, we're targeting, one, two, three, seven. Yes, ten, seven.
And would that be for the, for the duration of a year, or how long?
Yes ma'am, for the upcoming year, and then hopefully the next year, we can apply for more.
Okay, is this a grant, or this, I know it comes through the E-rate?
Um, no ma'am, not necessarily a grant, it's, um, through like, um, your phone bill that has that E-rate or tax on it, that goes back to the state, and it's dispersed throughout the North Carolina, all the counties.
Oh, well. Okay, well, thank you for applying for it, and hopefully it'll come through.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Tetter, are you any questions?
I'm good, my questions were answered, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barker, I'm good, so moving on to item B. Engagement survey video.
Okay, Mr. Rogers, this is in board, this is Melissa Jessup speaking. On the engagement survey, I talked with Qualtrics, and you had a video in the packet Pam sent to you, you may even want to table this, uh, after I speak with you tonight, and have further discussion when you can visually, all the board can visually see the information in front of them, but basically, the company can streamline the survey, so if it's a custodian answering the survey, it will just say principal in areas or questions where it asks about your supervisor, and then if it's something that relates to central services, it will say director or superintendent, but they can set the survey up depending on how the per, with the person and how they log into the survey, it can identify at least their job category, so then the survey will populate the questions accordingly for their position.
Ms. Knight, do you have any questions? Because we can table it. Until you, everybody turns to see the video.
I, I mean, I would support that idea personally.
Okay, Ms. Messick?
Um, I think it'd be a good idea, I haven't had a chance to see the video, uh, one thing I do wanna ask, Ms.
It's in the box.
Can you hear me?
I hear you, but somebody's in the background making noise.
Yes, excuse me, on the, on the, uh, Mr. Lee Edwards has just joined the meeting, Mr. Edwards, if I could get you to mute your microphone, please, uh, would appreciate it.
Uh, as I was saying, I'd like to see the video, and then, um, it looked like to me the survey mostly leaned toward, um, uh, principals. Um, is that what our goal was to do that?
Mrs. Messick, uh, this is Melissa Jessup speaking again, we can, as we get into the actual questions, the company, uh, the next person in the workflow will work closely with us as well as with you all in terms of designing questions that you really want to see for starting groups.
Oh, okay, that'd be good, thank you.
Anything else, Pat?
None, that's all.
Alright, Ms. Tetter? Did we lose Ms. Tetter?
I'm fine with tabling it until the others are ready.
Okay. Alright, then we will table that, put it on discussion for the next meeting, Pam, uh, actually, it'd be a good time to put it on the work session, uh, so we'll move on to discussion of licensure and evaluation updates.
Yes, Mr. Rogers and board, this is Melissa Jessup speaking again, basically, uh, the information is in your packet, I'll just give you the, the summary, the Cliff Notes version, then if you have questions, I will be happy to respond, but with the Senate Bill seven oh four, it allows for teacher license this year that would be expiring, uh, based upon their five-year renewal window, to have a one-year extension until June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, however, our teachers and other educators who have their CEUs and are ready to go, they can go ahead and, uh, renew now, that window just opened today, that they have that option, also, anybody who's on a provisional license working on coursework or testing, those type licenses also will have an extension so that they can continue, uh, the flow based upon COVID-19. Then the second part of, uh, is found in section two point one six, which deals with evaluations, wanted to give you an update there, uh, originally, we had shared with you what we'd learned from the department, and that was any observations completed prior to March thirteen, two thousand twenty, principals could go ahead and do the summary evaluation, if they have not completed observations, the number required prior to March thirteen, then they would not do a summary evaluation. After a webinar last, uh, week with the Department of Public Instruction, we have been advised that, uh, we would just ask principals to give feedback with the professional development end of the year review, it will not go into their permanent personnel record, but it will bring closure to this year, and just give them some overall feedback for the year.
Okay, Ms. Knight, do you have any questions?
Um, no sir, I think this sounds very fair, and I'm glad to hear this recommendation, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Messick, anything?
Oh, no, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Ms. Tetter?
I'm satisfied with that, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, alright, moving on to calendar update.
Good evening, board members.
I figured we'd hear from you finally.
I'm sorry?
I said, I figured we'd be hearing from you on this one.
Okay, uh, earlier in this month, Governor Cooper signed into law Senate Bill seven oh four and House Bill ten forty-three. In both of these bills, there were some changes that we required to make to our calendar. What you have in your packet is the changes to the early college calendar that we're recommending, and we have two options for our traditional calendar, option one and option two. Option one, if you have any questions, we can entertain those at this time.
If you're looking for, if you're looking for the changes in the calendar, the, the first primary change is it moves the start date from August twenty-fourth to August seventeenth, that is a mandatory change to add five days to our calendar, and so what we did was, we moved some workdays from the end of the year to the beginning of the year, to give a full week's worth of workdays before that first day of school. And then, so that left only one workday, June fourth, goes out the year, and then we're also required to put in remote learning days, and those are those kind of tannish, uh, items that we are on the calendar for March twenty-sixth, April sixteenth, twenty-third, thirtieth, and the fourteenth, looking to add those on Fridays toward the end of the year, expecting that when we have snow next year, we would, we, when we have predicted snow, we know one's coming for three or four days in advance, that we could plan remote learning days, uh, send devices home, and move those days in the calendar so that we don't lose instruction, again, to try to save spring break and those type things. That was the original draft calendar that we produced, then we talked with principals last week and got their input, and after that, and that also keeps in place most of the days there that, uh, the calendar committee had brought up, uh, that they wanted. Then we brought up option two after the principals revisions, op, option two looks the same at the beginning of the year, but the end of the year, they wanted workday so that we could do our remediation and retesting, which was a valid point, and then to move some of the remote learning days to fill in for some of the workdays that were canceled out in the calendar, because basically with adding the five additional instructional days, but still having to hold to the two hundred and fifteen days for employees, we lost five workdays, so this moved those remote days into the, some workdays, and then allowed workdays at the end of the year for remediation and retest. So those are the two calendars that we presented to you, and again, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about either of the calendars.
Ms. Knight?
Um, just from a quick, um, review, option two almost seems, um, I mean, what is your recommendation, Dr. Rice?
Again, after talking with the principals, they brought up some very valid points, and looking at it, we would like to recommend option two, uh, that would have the last students' day on May twenty-eighth before Memorial Day, would provide her four days of, days for remediation and retest, and still gives us some flexibility with weather days with our remote learning days, so we would like to recommend option two.
Uh huh, okay, thank you, um. One more question, as of right now, is the state recommending, um, starting school earlier, or anytime at the beginning of the year to help students that could be struggling due to, um, you know, the remote learning and everything that's went on with COVID-19?
The state is encouraging us to look at a plan, but at this time, as you know, we don't have any guidance of what that would look like, uh, would we be limited to ten or fewer people, would we be limited to, you know, fifty people, would we have to do the six feet of, of social distancing in between people, would we, we don't know some of those rules yet, we have been told that that would be an option, and right now, we, again, are discussing these things at district level, but until we get the rules that we have to play by, we're having to hold off on firm plans, but yes, we've been told to start looking at something to help struggling students. But yes, we've been told to start looking at something to help struggling students possibly before students show up. Again, we don't know if that would be during the August 10th work, workdays, or if we're looking maybe the week prior to that to bring people back. And again, that would be a staffing cost, and we would have to see what monies we have available at that time for that as well.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Rogers.
All right, thank you, Ms. Masick.
And Mr. Rogers, i- if I may add just a couple of things. In full disclosure, option two does somewhat change May the 7th. For those of you who were on the Calendar Committee, May the 7th was an issue that they brought up. It is now an option to a virtual learning day, which could be used as a workday at some point if need be. So that, that break could continue to be there. The other thing that this option two takes away is Dr. Rice has committed to that first week of workdays being entirely available for schools and staff to prepare for this year. So unless I am mistaken, and Dr. Rice, you can correct me if I'm wrong, option two does not reflect a convocation or beginning of the year program as we typically provide.
Uh, actually, option one and option two, I don't see how we would have the convocation and workday on that Friday. Uh, we just, we lose five workdays and that loses a lot of our flexibility. And again, as he said, we're, we would be looking at open houses being on the 11th and the 13th would be our traditional open house days. And I don't see stealing time from the building level because people want to get their classrooms ready, get ready for those as much as possible. So as he said, that, the week of the 10th through the 14th, I'm not saying there would be no, nothing from the district level, but nothing like our back-to-school conference. But, you know, obviously, if EC teachers, new hires, needed some training with different things, there may be some spot PD here and there, but it would not be the back-to-school conference or the, uh, convocation.
One additional positive piece of option two, and option one for that matter, is it adds five days of instruction to the first semester. For those of you on the Calendar Committee, remember, we talked about the unbalanced semesters. So by adding five days of instruction, that actually helps the first semester as well.
So that kind of balances us back out where we were heavily weighted on one side and not the other, right?
That gets us much closer. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. With the additional new information, Ms. Knight, do you have anything else?
Um, testing or, um, exams still before Christmas? Break, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm fine, Mr. Rogers. No further questions?
All right, Ms. Masick?
Uh, well, I did want to say that if open houses start on the 11th and 13th, that only gives, uh, teachers one day unless they go in, you know, early and work on their own to get their classrooms ready. You know, that's to get their, um, class list. Uh, especially in elementary school, you know, it wants your class list. And if they had open house on the 13th, on the 11th, wouldn't that kind of push people?
It, it does.
Yes, ma'am. That, that is a very short window of time. Unfortunately, by the state not extending the 215-day contract, it really limits the days that we have to provide to teachers.
And it also follows the schedule that we've used the last couple of years because we've done convocation and the back-to-school conference on Thursday and Friday. The first day back in the buildings was the Monday, which still followed that Tuesday open house. So now with reducing that Thursday and Friday, we're taking out the convocation and back-to-school conference. So they're still getting that first Monday back in their building and then getting ready for Tuesday night open house. So it's kind of the same schedule they've had. We just reduced our district days at the beginning.
Well, I imagine a lot of people, after they went to that convocation, went on back to their rooms. And so if they could, it's just, it's just, uh, you know, hectic for people. If you've never set up a classroom, it would be hard for you to envision how that is impossible practically to do it in the one day. And it'll cause people to have to work, um, that fall, the week before. Just, you know, work for free. Um, well, I did want to say, um, there was one other question. What is this, uh, virtual learning day?
The state is requiring us to put in five days of remote learning. And again, and we're not allowed to start those until the 24th of August at the earliest. But that is, I believe, they, again, they didn't write why in the law, but it looks like the belief is that whether we extend remote learning days like we've been doing this spring, either for the future in pandemics, or if there were a fall, um, you know, recurrence of COVID-19, or hurricane days down east, they want us to have a written plan, uh, turned into the state about with, I think it's 13 main points about how we deliver remote instruction. And then they're giving us five days a year to practice it. There are also that if there was a state of emergency issued by the governor, again, for like a hurricane where they lost three or four weeks, but last fall, then schools could do, add more remote learning days to their calendar, uh, during times of crisis like that.
Okay, which, uh, was that, was that 704 or 1043?
704.
Senate Bill 704.
Okay, so that's new, new this year.
Yes, ma'am. It was signed into law, I believe, the end of the second week of May.
Uh, I think on the calendar before, you had run some of this by all the staff and personnel that have to, you know, go by the calendar. Were you able to do that this time, or just go ahead and revise it and?
We revised it. We revised it, ran it by the directors and principals, trying to get it to the board, hopefully for approval, because we want to announce to the public that we're, the new start dates for school as soon as possible. If you want us to run it by staff, parent committees, we can do all of that. But obviously, that would be a later approval time, which would therefore be a later announcement time, uh, for the calendar. So we were hoping that we've worked out the kinks with the groups that we've run it by. And ru- after running it by you tonight, we were hoping to get approval so that we could make these announcements.
So it's not much different from the original one, right? Not that much different? From the one that was created to begin with?
It's not significantly different. And, and please bear in mind, we have families that may or may not be in the process of trying to plan summer trips and make plans. So the sooner we can communicate this with our families and staff, it would be better.
Okay. Well, thank you for all the answers to my questions. I appreciate it. And I'm finished now.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Masick. Ms. Tetter?
The only thing that I noticed on there, and you probably just, there's no way to do it. Uh, well, haven't we before in the past put report card dates on there? But we just don't know that what might be what anymore. And my point leading up to that is that I noticed the October end of the third nine, I mean, first nine weeks, the workdays not until that Monday after the third nine weeks ends on a Wednesday. And that was one thing we talked about in the committee meeting, having the workday.
Yes, ma'am. We, we, we can go in and put the end of the grading periods. And we did have to adjust some of the workdays to try to match it because when we bumped the start of school up by five days, of course, that would change the end of the grading day, great, excuse me, grading period by five days. So we did make some adjustments. As you referenced, the workday in October went from the 26th to the 19th because I believe by pushing that back, that makes the end of the grading period, Dr. Rice, was it the 15th? Is that correct?
I believe the end of the grading period is October 14th.
Four, I'm sorry, 14th.
Those are the dark green days in the calendar.
That, that was the only thing I noticed. I, I know this is, um, I mean, this could all change by next week, you know, who knows? So that was my only comment on that, though. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Ms. Tetter. With that being said, it sounds like we're needing to move forward so that we can notify our, uh, parents and staff as to the start of the school year. So at this time, if somebody would like to make a motion to adopt a plan, either, uh, or to move this to action, rather, please signify by saying your name and the motion.
And the motion, we would like to include the early college suggested calendar and which of the traditional calendars you're recommending.
Well, we're just moving to that, moving the whole item to action first. And then when we get to action, we'll make a recommendation on which plan they are motioning forward for action or approval.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'm just going to move the whole thing to action if somebody wants to make that motion.
I make a motion, this is Pat Masick, to move it to action, the calendar revision.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Masick. Do I have a second?
I will second and, and say aye to that. Tetter?
All right. Tetter, okay. All right, Ms. Knight, how so do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Masick?
Aye.
Ms. Tetter?
Aye.
All right, and I so moved, so we will make that action, item F, calendar.
Thank you, Board.
And remember, as we get there, we'll need a motion for whether we choose early college and A or B. Okay? Uh, item number E, discussion of V, uh, VCPS.
Good evening, Board members. This is Doug Rose. Uh, just wanted to help you a little bit about the North Carolina Virtual Public Schools as an elective for our AIG eighth-grade student. You all had approved this earlier, but there's one piece of the criteria that we have to maintain. These are the fact that we will not, uh, EOG scores at the end of this school year. And that was our principals, the middle school principals, uh, within the last two weeks. And we talked about this, and they recommended that we use, um, our last already diagnostic to identify those students and get an application and invites for them to participate in, um, Latin through North Carolina Virtual Public Schools. So using that criteria and looking at what the maximum number would be, it would be approximately 23 students total across the county that would have the option to participate in that. And I just included a copy of what we're going to use for the application in the board packet for you. Do you have any questions for me?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Rose. L Zar. Ms. Knight? Any questions?
Did you have good response or participation or interest, uh, Mr. Rose?
So, Ms. Knight, with this, we, um, the criteria had gotten sort of messed up for it. So we have just established the final criteria on this because of not having the EOG scores. So we are going to be submitting this. I just wanted to run it by you all before we send it out to everyone. I would expect to have really good feedback from them as this is, you know, an AIG advanced option, and I'll get them to jumpstart on language for high school. So this could give them two extra, um, high school credits and they could be finished with their foreign language before they get to high school.
Yes, I think it's a great, uh, great opportunity. And, um, your principals all like this, I'm sure.
Yeah, they, they, um, sounded real comfortable about this when they met. And, you know, went through the criteria one last time. And then I sent this application to them, or to putting it in the board packet for you all, just to get their final review, and got positive feedback from them on that as well.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Masick?
Uh, Mr. Rose, I just wanted to ask, um, uh, I see that the, um, scoring would be the 93rd percentile. Is that right? Maintain an 85 or higher average in each class score at the 93rd percentile?
That is a national norm from I Ready for reading. Uh, so we would measure your diagnostic, look at those national norms. And if there's a 93rd percentile in reading, or 90 or higher in both reading and math, they would receive an invitation if they met the other criteria.
I think that, are you still sticking with the 95th percentile too? Because I think that's pretty high.
Um, well, it would be 93rd percentile for reading. And then if they had 90th percentile or higher on the reading and the math diagnostic, that would also be a qualifier. So we, we did mention just a little bit there.
So up above where it says score of the 95th percentile or higher in the seventh grade reading EOG and maintain a minimum of 85 in every course, is that still part of it?
That was the criteria that we had hoped to use, and I wanted to keep that. That was what we had discussed before. I wanted to keep that. However, for this upcoming year, we don't have those EOG scores to establish a 95th percentile. So we had to digress back to, um,
93rd?
Yes, ma'am, with, with our I Ready diagnostic.
Okay. Well, I think it's more fair that, uh, that's a pretty high percentile, 95th. And 23 students across the county is, um, you know, it's a doable number, right?
It is.
Okay. Do you know how much extra that will cost?
Um, it will be, it will be around $18,000.
For all 23 people?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I think it is something that, um, that students would certainly benefit from if they took advantage of it and would be able to, um, you know, learn a foreign language. Is it just one foreign language that they choose?
Yes, that way they'd be working in the same areas and could support each other a little better.
Okay. So do you know what foreign language would be offered?
We would be looking at Latin as long as NCVPS is able to offer that for next year and the numbers that we would need.
But no other one? Not Spanish or?
Um, you know, we had hoped to do the one so that they could work together. We could certainly look at others.
Oh, okay. Well, is there a Latin in, uh, the high schools? Is West Stokes offer Latin, or South Stokes, or North Stokes?
No, it would, I mean, we just have it through North Carolina Virtual Public.
So it'd just be the one year of Latin?
They would be able to get two semesters worth.
Oh, okay.
So they would get their two credits prior to entering high school.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate all the hard work you've done on this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Tetter?
I'm good with the report as presented. Thank you very much for your work on that, Mr. Rose. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Tetter.
Okay, this is where I'll, I'll kind of weigh in. And, and Pat, just, just so you know, Latin will, uh, assist these kids tremendously with their SATs. The two students, uh, that were in this test project, one of them starts Cambridge in October under the Marshall Scholarship, which is like 50 a year. Uh, the other one starts med school July the 7th. So, and both of them have, I've, I've talked to both of them since one of them lives with me. Both of them felt like it gave them an edge up, being able to take more challenging classes once they got to high school. And even one of them went on and took some foreign languages at high school and said the Latin being the base of it helped them tremendously going on with taking Spanish. So I'm all for it, Dr. Rose. I applaud you for the, the work. And yeah, this was kind of my, you know, uh, I guess a pet project. But I want to thank the Board for having the foresight to move this along. And I think it's going to be an awesome thing for Stokes County students to be able to say, hey, I went beyond what anybody thought I could do. So. hey, I went beyond what anybody thought I could do. So, that being said, I want to thank you all, and we'll move on to the next topic item. Let me get my book back over here, which is COVID-19 update. Dr. Rice, did you help us out here?
Uh, yes, sir. Just, we are getting some guidance now a little bit about reopening of school in the fall. Uh, the state sent out some guidance from the CDC late Friday afternoon. Uh, I know Superintendent Johnson has shared that in social media. Uh, we looked at it this morning as directors. Uh, we, I've challenged them to start looking at some plans. The problem that we have is, again, we don't have the rules that we're gonna be playing with in the fall yet. We don't know, I mean, for example, uh, Mr. Langford received communication late last week that to plan on social distancing on a bus, that may be an option. But he, we also received that, that we didn't know what that would look like. Is that one per seat, which would drop us from a seventy-two passenger bus down to a twenty-four passenger bus? Or is it every other seat, which would be twelve passengers on a bus? Well, you know, that's a huge impact in making bus routes if you're counting to pick up seventy-two kids or twelve. Um, and so where they've told us to start is kind of like what I talked about before with the summer school slash jumpstart planning. They've told us to start having discussions and start planning, but we don't know what rules we're playing with. Um, but we do have that guidance. We have started, we, we started looking at it and discussing it this morning. The other thing that's really coming into play right now is, again, not knowing the rules. You know, one of the things from the CDC said that as practicable, uh, employees and students wearing a cloth face covering, as feasible. Well, if that is a disposable kind, uh, and we provided one to every student and every staff member for the school year, that's nine point, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars at current pricing if we're able to get it. So, right now, we, again, we are looking at plans, we are trying to figure out how to handle some of our extra things like driver's ed. Again, we've not been given clear start dates. We've just been told to start making plans for when it's open, under whatever rules we are given when it's open. So we're trying to work with other districts right now. Ms. Jessup is serving on a regional task force, reentry task force, uh, and in our region, there's a couple of superintendents serving on the state reentry task force. Again, we are meeting multiple times a week, either as a region and/or state, trying to make sense of it, but until we are given the rules, it's kind of impossible to make full plans. Kind of like the start date, when they tell us that legally we have to start August seventeenth, but they've also said that whatever orders we're under at the time must be followed. So if we have to keep six feet of space in between us, uh, do we go on an A day, B day, or A week versus B week? We, we don't have those answers yet because we don't have the rules that we're gonna have to play by yet. But there, the, the guidance keeps popping out, you know, almost daily, and the communication's going, but, uh, as far as any definite plans and definite answers, we just don't have them yet. Are there specific questions that maybe you have heard something about that you'd like to, to ask?
I would just like to ask on a little bit, on a little bit different note, as far as, um, is everything going well for the virtual graduations and all that? So far, so good with that planning?
So far, so good. The early college started theirs last week, um, and I believe finished up last week, and the other school starting theirs this week, and I've not heard, I, I've heard that at some schools, maybe they're not getting a hundred percent participation yet, so there've been extra phone calls going out from principals trying, and emails, trying to make sure that everyone gets signed up, but I've not heard of any problems per se.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tetter, I mean, Ms., uh, Messick?
Uh, well, at this time, I don't have any questions because everything right now is just conjecture. You know, we just have to wonder what's gonna happen in the future, so I just, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Pat. Ms., uh, Tetter?
Uh, thank you for that update regarding the buses, Dr. Rice. That's honestly, that's not something I had thought about when I asked to put that on the agenda, but that's just, it's just mind-boggling how we're gonna be able to manage things if we're even able to go back to school as we knew it before March. But, um, one thing I did want to ask about is are, are y'all having discussions at vocal level, or maybe a superintendent about, um, year-long classes rather than traditional semesters for the upper grades?
No, ma'am, we, we have not had that type of discussion yet. Uh, it may be prudent for us to look at that, not knowing, again, what we're, what our full start date would be. Um, to be honest, we're more worried about, right now, trying to get guidance from the state as far as metrics of what if somebody at a school, and I should say when someone at a school is identified with COVID-19, does that mean that that class is all quarantined for fourteen days and they quit coming to school? Or is it the whole school, and we're elementary school, that might seem easy, uh, to take a second grade class and send them home for two weeks? But how does that work with a high school student that goes to four different teachers and possibly two different campuses? Uh, does that shut down entire campuses? What about if athletics are allowed to resume? If one person on the football team is identified as having it, does that shut down an entire team for two weeks? We're looking a lot more global, looking for guidance and answers than we have looking specifically at, um, should we go year, year-long classes instead of, um, semester classes? Uh, that would also require some change in policy of the number of credits required for graduation. Uh, two, just, that just popped in my head as you said that, though, is because their a, attempts at credits would be reduced.
Right, and, and it would depend on, um, state's testing regulations and all that, but, so I was just curious if there'd been any any beginnings of conversations along those lines.
I, we have not discussed that as superintendents or in Stokes County. I'm not saying that, no one has discussed that, but not to my knowledge. There's so many different ramifications of this that are just mind-boggling, as you said. You know, one of the guidance is that we have a screening mechanism when people come into school. Does that mean get to school with a temperature check, with a gun shooting it on their forehead? But that, that could be after they've been on the bus for an hour and a half. So do we need the bus driver with a temperature gun? Well, we've not ordered seventy-six temperature guns right now, again, because if it's not a requirement, I don't want to waste that kind of money. Um, if it is a requirement, it might be hard to get an in later. And so we're trying to weigh out those things, and again, talk as superintendents to try to read the tea leaves together and try to figure some of this stuff out. But it, it is really a monumental task when you think of all the different things that could come of this, financially, personnel-wise. I mean, again, I heard a legislature say recently, they said, well, it could be really easy, just take all your middle and high school students and leave them at home, and then bring all your K-five people back, and you could spread them out between your elementary, middle, and high school buildings so that everyone could social distance. Well, my question, who's teaching them? Because you go from, I mean, one, I mean, the classroom libraries that an elementary school teacher has. If you have to try to replicate that in buildings, desks don't fit kindergartners uh, or fifth graders at the high school level. And again, who's teaching them? We would need two to three times the number of teachers and teacher assistants to pull that off while still needing the other staff members, and what I'm hearing could be a very tough budget year uh, with more cuts. So it doesn't all add up when people in Raleigh make very simple suggestions that freak people out. The freak out is for a reason, um, because it would be very hard to implement some of those things without a lot of additional funding. And then, as Ms. Jessup well knows, how many candidates are out there to fill these positions? Uh, the schools of education are not putting out the candidates that they once did when there may be the greatest demand in our history.
Agree. Yes. Any other updates on, um, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, all of you with teaching certificates, we may be recruiting you hard in the fall.
Right. Right. A, any new developments on the child nutrition front? Everything going well on that?
Everything is stabilized there staffing-wise. We, uh, are going to be able to do that through the end of June, and with some recent guidance, it looks like we may be able to continue that through the end of the year. We have not finalized those discussions yet. Uh, but we will do so this week to find out if we're going through the end of the school year, but it looks like the grants will be available. We just need to get with our staff to make sure that we have the personnel, manpower to make it happen. And again, as long as we can keep getting food, it's getting, um, scarce at times to be able to get the food that we need and the containers to get the food out. Again, we're used to having a tray where we put everything on it versus having to wrap everything individually to send it home. It is a, um, a packing nightmare, and packing materials are issues at times as well. Again, we're very grateful that we've had some store partners that have helped us with bags, um, whether that's Sam's Club, Walmart Foods, Dollar Stores, different grocery stores. I, I know, I, I don't want to name any, any more specifically, because I know I'll leave some out, but we've had some great community partners reach out and help us out with some of those things at times as well.
That's wonderful. Thank you for that update.
Thank you for that update. That is wonderful news about the nutrition. This is Pat Messick.
Great. The only thing I'll add is going, going forward, I mean, if we do have to social distance on the buses, that could be a plus for us with our efficiency rating. So, Board just be aware, I mean, we're getting pinged pretty hard because of the long bus routes and having, having fewer people on the bus than should be, so this may be a financial assistance, short-term, until we can get through this COVID crisis, so. Okay, with that moving on, we'll go to action item-
Mike, about that, though, we, we don't have the buses for that, though, do we?
No, not yet.
Well, and I don't think that anybody has that store of buses that the state would need. That would necessitate us going, you know, I'm making it up, A through F going on Monday, F through B going on Tuesday, that we would have to stagger routes to get people to school with twelve people on a bus.
Right. Right. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to action item A, approval of alternative accountability model for Meadowbrook two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the alternative method for Meadowbrook.
That would be Ms. Tetter? Correct?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. All right, do I have a second?
This is Pat Messick. This is Pat Messick, I second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Messick. I have an appro, I have a motion and a second. Ms. Knight, how so do you vote?
I vote aye.
Ms. Messick?
I vote aye.
Ms. Tetter?
Aye.
And I, I vote aye, also, Ms., uh, Bullock Jack, so. Approval of network services and network monitoring agreement. I'm gonna open that one up for discussion real quick, because I know it was discussed, and then contract flew around. Mr. Johnson, do you have an update for us?
Yes, sir. The network monitoring agreement and the network servicing agreement have been revised as I have requested. Uh, I don't know if you have the most recent versions of those documents. It is my recommendation that the Board approve those documents. There are only a couple of typographical errors that need to be resolved. The issues, um, regarding insurance and indemnification, uh, the correct designation of the Board of Education, and the, uh, state mandated, uh, sex offender registration, uh, checks have been resolved. Uh, it is my recommendation, as I indicated, that the Board approve those, subject to editorial revision.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. With that being said, do I have a motion to approve by, made by, and state your name?
Yes, I make a motion, Cheryl Knight, to approve the, uh, South Data Network Service and Monitoring Agreement with the recommended editorial correction.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Knight. Do I have a second?
This is Pat Messick, I make a second.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. Ms. Knight, how so do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Messick?
Aye.
Ms. Tetter?
Aye.
That makes it unanimous, Sam. Thank you very much. Moving on to approval of capital outlay budget amendment two. Do I have a motion to approve?
Uh, this is Pat Messick, I make a motion to approve the capital outlay budget amendment number two.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Messick. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Rogers, Cheryl Knight.
Okay, I have a sec, a motion and a second, since this went straight to action. Do we have any discussion? Does anybody have any questions before we vote? Okay, pending no questions. Ms. Knight, how so do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Messick?
Aye.
Ms. Tetter?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Moving on, approval of current expense fund eight, budget amendment number five. Do I have a motion to approve?
This is Pat Messick, I make a motion to approve the current expense fund eight amendment number two for State's County-
Thank you, Ms. Me, thank you, Ms. Messick. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Rogers, Cheryl Knight.
All right, thank you, Ms. Knight. I have a motion and I have a second. Again, I, being as I put this straight to action, do I have any comments or questions? Pending none. Ms. Knight, how so do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Messick?
Aye.
Ms. Tetter?
Aye.
All right, it's approved unanimously. Approval of federal fund budget amendment number five. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make that motion, Mr. Rogers, to approve, um, federal fund budget amendment number five.
All right, that motion was made by Ms. Knight. Do I have a second?
I second it, Pat Messick.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. All right, again, that went straight to action. Do I have any discussion or questions? Seeing none or hearing none? Ms., uh, Ms. Knight, how so do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Messick?
Aye.
Ms. Tetter?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, Ms., uh, Bullock Jack. Thank y'all very much. All right, now we're moving on to item F, which was added, moved from discussion. It is the calendar. On this, the Board member making the motion will make so with the addition- On this, the board member making the motion will make so with the addition of the early college calendar in either o- item or option A or option B. Do I have a motion in that form?
I can make that motion, Mr. Rogers, to approve the early college calendar as well as option two, or I believe B, is that correct, option two?
Yes.
In the, in the calendar.
Two is B, so we'll just, yeah, we'll go with that.
Okay, it's Cheryl Knight.
Okay, Ms. Knight, thank you. Do I have a second? Okay, pending no second. Do I have an alternative motion?
I think I need to ask a que, go ahead.
Go ahead, it's specific.
Go ahead, Pat.
Well, the thing is, we only had the one, in my packet, I only had the one, um, early college to look at.
Dr. Tether, would you like to weigh in on the opposite early college basis, since they are dictated by the Forsyth County Tech program?
Unfortunately, we, we don't have a lot of options since we do partner with Forsyth Tech on the early college calendar. I, I will not speak for Dr. Rice, but when we look at the required changes, it pretty much put us in this, in this calendar. There was not a lot of room, a lot of wiggle room in this calendar.
Well, what I was saying was, um, did you only present the one calendar? That's all I could see.
Yes ma'am, there's only one early college option and then there's two traditional options.
Well, why, well, I didn't understand when you said all, early college, either option A or B.
It was the early college and either A or B for the traditional.
Okay, well, it must have cut out. I didn't hear that. Okay, I'm good now. Go ahead.
Okay, then with that being said, Ms. Messick, would you like to second Ms. Knight's motion? Or would you like to make an alternative motion?
Um, well, Ms. Tether, were you going to second that motion when I interrupted?
That's what I was preparing to do, yes ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
I will second Ms. Knight's motion on approval of the calendars.
All right, I have an, uh, a motion and I have a second. Ms. Knight, how so do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Messick?
Aye.
Ms. Tether?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Bolajack, that would be an affirmative on all fronts, so it is unanimous. And the early calendar has been set, or the early college calendar in option, uh, two has been set. So, please get that on the website, Ms. Parker, and, uh, thank you for your diligence, Dr. Rice and Dr. Tyler.
Thank you, board members.
Okay.
Thank you, board.
Okay, that concludes action. Information and announcements.
Board members, I'd like to share a couple of things with you. I would like to remind you of your joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners on May the twenty-eighth at three PM. They're in the Commissioners' chamber. And then your work session is scheduled for June first, and your next regular meeting is scheduled for June the fifteenth. You also have in your packet the seventh month PMR. And then the calendars that you have in your packet now, they have changed based on your action tonight. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Johnson, could you read your spiel so we can go back into closed?
Yes, sir. With the chairman, we need a motion to resume closed session for the reasons initially stated, that is, under North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, twenty-eleven, subsections A one, A three, and A six.
Okay, do I have such a motion?
I make a motion, Mr. Rogers, to go into closed session, Cheryl Knight.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Knight. Do I have a second?
Second it, this is Pat Messick.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. All those in favor, or no, no, no. Ms. Knight, how so do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Messick?
Aye.
Ms. Tether?
Aye.
All right, we're unanimous. And before I pronounce this into close, Mr. Caldwell, I hope you have a wonderful day and I appreciate you being here representing the media of Stokes County. Thank you very much. We are now in closed.
Do we need to call in on, on another member?
Oh, we, no, we're not going to do that. Dr. Rice, can you tell me when everybody has hung up? We would only do that if we need to because we had technical difficulties. Uh, Ms. Messick and I both trying to get back to here.
I'm stopping the recording, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogers, we have people leaving as we speak.
Okay.